If you'll please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you for joining us. Before we get started, we just wanted to talk about something that happened earlier this morning. We lost one of our students in a very tragic accident and we just want everyone to know that we're really thinking about all of the families that are involved, all the staff and the students at the school that our student attended. Really difficult way to start a school day, a tragic accident that happens and there's really nothing more to say other than that our thoughts are with the families involved.
Yeah, I would just add that both Kia, Masanaga, the principal at Ilhi, and then Aaron Lucic went back, the principal that's been in the school for quite some time, and tried to provide as much support. I know that Carl Smith is leading this smart team. I know they were out there today, they're gonna be back as long as they're needed to be there. So yeah, very difficult situation.
I know that we appreciate too that we deploy our teams and all the people to help in times like this and make sure that all of our staff and students feel supported.
I think that there's some folks from KIAM's school district coming to help support tomorrow as well.
We were sent the copy of the letters that Kia sent out and yeah, I'm sorry that it happened. Just sorry.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. If we can get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt today's agenda.
Can we get a second?
Second.
So move in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to special recognition. We are celebrating National Disability and National Hispanic Heritage Month, so National Disability Awareness Month. We're gonna turn this over to Director Perkins. Before we start with that though, we need to acknowledge that Vice President Bradford is absent and would not be able to attend the meeting, so if we can excuse her absent?
I'd love to excuse her.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Alright. Director Perkins, do you want to talk about National Disability Awareness Month?
This is a statement prepared for us to read for National Disability Awareness Month. It reads, "A school district and workplace welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a crucial part of our efforts to build an inclusive and strong community. In this spirit, Evergreen Public Schools recognizes October as National Disability Awareness Month to raise awareness about disability issues and celebrate the many and varied value and talents people with disabilities add to our schools, workplaces, and communities, and affirm the district's commitment to an inclusive community." It's shorter than a government announcement.
Yes.
But it contains the sentence.
Rob, did you also want to add something about?
Yeah, I took the opportunity this last week to go to, I can't remember if I looked my calendar, I forget the name of this, the National Disability Employment Awareness Awards Night given in the county to recognize the companies and the employees that foster this kind of thing. And I mean, it was at awards night as significant as the IRS awards or any of the other community awards that are given out in the community. And the whole community was there. Representatives, I think Representative Haas, Councilmember Temple Lentz, Senator Linda Wilson, they were all there. I don't remember whether others were recognized because it was last Wednesday. The interesting thing that happened that evening is that someone walked up to me with a school issue. It turned out that it had been someone who'd emailed in with the district asking about our program. He is a graduate of the Crestwood Transitions Program from as long before the Great Recession. There was no evidence in his interactions with me that there was any disability at all. So we taught them. He loved the program enough to go back and remember what it was like for him, like more than the loss of a change in structure. I think he's had some conversations, this gentleman with Brian and with Che, about how things have changed and how we're serving kids today. I'm not trying to call you on the carpet or anything, just got that feedback. But that was really impressive. And then they awarded a couple of companies, large employers, small employers, and then the employees themselves. And it was a young woman from, who was employed at the Air Hospitality Academy, used to be the Air Academy over on in Grand and Millplank. It's just beautiful to watch recognition of all people. It kept repeating, it all means all. We're going to employ everybody. And the Crestwood program is a part of that. I put a posting on my Facebook page about it too. And the evidence is there before our eyes. Pretty glad they're getting a new building.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, that one of the exciting things with our barn projects is that we're able to give Crestwood its own building. It's a fantastic program and we've got a lot of great partners. And we see that every year at graduation with all of the workplace partners that employ those students or give them internships to help them complete their studies. And we've got a lot of special employees at the district that are working with our students that need that extra help. Alright, thank you. Alright, so now we'll move on to National Hispanic Heritage Month and Director Bronwell.
Excuse me. National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. We are grateful for the many contributions Hispanic-American men, women, and children make to our society and the vibrancy they weave into our American culture.
Thank you. Again, an important part of our schools. I think all of our schools are doing multicultural nights. Our elementary schools, which is really a fantastic program that they're putting on to celebrate all of the different cultures that we have in Evergreen. And I believe my district, we have about 25% of students?
Approximately 25% of our students come from Hispanic families, exactly.
That's a very, very good population.
And we have the dual immersion program, which has been very popular at our schools. Now they're in middle school, which is crazy to think that it was just that long ago that we were starting them out, but.
Yeah. If you get a chance to go to Pioneer's Cultural Night close to the end of this year, or the Culture Parade also close to the end of this year, take it. It is a wonderful gathering of people. And I think Marion does a spaghetti feed still, don't they, their immersion program?
They do the what?
They do a spaghetti feed or something like that. They used to. There's, including this culture brings such vibrancy and life to a school. It's beautiful.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next we'll move on to the Board Consent Agenda.
I move that we adopt the Board Consent Agenda.
Second.
Move in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next Superintendent Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda. Second.
Move in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next is the Superintendent Report. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Merlino for an update to the board.
Thank you. Just have a few things to mention. First, I would mention that starting October 1st, the new SEB Open Enrollment, that started, so the School Employees Benefits Program that starts in January, started, open enrollment for folks October 1st. It goes through November 15th. I think we've, I was talking with Janay this afternoon, we've already got about 900 plus of our employees that have signed up. I know one sitting here that hasn't yet that needs to. So that's probably about a third, not quite a third, maybe 30% of the folks that will ultimately, I think the effort is trying to get them enrolled by October 15th. So, but that's been great. I know that the HR staff is, I think they're holding something like 15 sessions for employees. They were transportation last week, they were here at the district office. A lot of folks coming in and helping them get enrolled and making sure that they're, they're doing everything they need to do to take care of that. So that's, that's a big one. The last Thursday, Sue and I were fortunate enough to go present, was it, when was the last Thursday? Was that two weeks ago meeting?
It was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago Thursday, at the CREDC Board Meeting, talking about the school bond program. And that, I think went real well. I enjoyed having the opportunity. So a lot of our community leaders, sharing with them the successes thus far in the bond program. The main thing, at that point, we had sold $200 million worth of bonds a couple days earlier at historically low interest rates. Were achieving tax rates that we had talked about when we ran the bond. Were ahead of schedule in terms of the projects that we're delivering and under budget. I know Sue doesn't like me saying that, but the more I say it, the more it has to be. Sue, and I've said it everywhere, has done such a tremendous job of leading the whole bond project. When you think about $800 million plus, being able to make those kinds of statements is a big deal. I was also happy to meet the WSU President, Kirk Schultz, was the opener for him. And that was kind of nice, to have that opportunity. I would also mention that with respect to the bond, this Thursday, there's going to be kind of an open house to get a sense of what folks that work here at ASC are going to have to see in the new administrative office that will, I think we're bidding that in December, get an idea of kind of the new workspaces that they will have and kind of what those workspaces might look like. I don't know what time, does that start in the morning sometime?
It starts at 1:00.
Afternoon sometime? So if anyone wants to stop by and get a look at what those kinds of things are gonna, the furniture's gonna look like.
Oh, are they gonna actually have the furniture here?
Yeah, I think they are. Yeah, they're gonna have furniture here. There's gonna be videos too.
Yeah.
And Bounce House. Snowplains.
No more Bounce Houses.
Too dangerous, yeah, that's probably true. But yeah, so if you, if you're interested in seeing any of that, you're welcome to stop by. The other thing I would mention about the, the bond, we had a meeting, not a lot of folks showed up, the representatives of the communities, the committees that participated in kind of the moving forward on the bond. October 30th at 6 o'clock, there's gonna be another, kind of just a community presentation. I know that Margaret asked about that at one point in time. Somebody had asked her, but it's October 30th at 6 o'clock here. And a lot of times there aren't a lot of folks that show up at some of these things, so Gail and I are gonna figure out how we can advertise that every day on Facebook and Craig can do a video shoot, make sure that's out there so he can get some more people to show up. I think it's a great, what we're doing is a really good story and I think it's, hopefully more people will want to participate. And if they don't, we'll figure out other ways to share because it's, it's a great story. Bill and I have been going, Bill has spent a lot of time in the elementary schools. Bill and I are kind of going to, visiting the principals. We've been to a number of the secondary schools. That's been great. Kind of talking about the start of the school year, what's going well, what kind of things do we need to support them with. And the last thing I would mention is that financially, we're still working on closing the books. Hopefully we'll have that done by the end of this month. We met this afternoon with the new County Treasurer, Alicia Topper. She came, she's going to all the different jurisdictions and school districts and kind of talking about the relationship and what can they do to help us and what can we do to, to help them. So it was a good meeting. Always good to have opportunities to enhance relationships with folks in the community. So that's what we've been doing.
Sounds good. Alright, next is focus on student results. Results R3, student safety. So I'm gonna turn this over again to Mike and he can get us started on this one.
So what we have done is actually, the board kind of led a conversation and Rob led a conversation around the new board governance structure that we have. The board has results policies, they have operational expectations, and they've kind of set kind of parameters of what we should look at. In particular, as some of the conversations were occurring last spring around graduation time and some of the issues that had come up at heritage with respect to whether it was harassment or bullying or these kinds of, there were some statements at that time around that. Rob, I believe, felt that, you know, we don't have an explicit statement around school safety or student safety. And so Rob spent some time, we talked about it again at the board retreat in August, and then Rob took some time kind of coming up with some, not really, kind of looking at other areas within our OEs and our results policies and trying to kind of craft a student safety policy result that the board could have as a, as a general statement. So that's kind of the background. What you have in front of you today is that results policy, R3 around safety, and then R4 and R5 are new numbers. So that's basically just renumbering. So that's what we're talking about with this results policy.
I'll have a couple of questions when we get to it. But first, I guess I'd open it up to the audience for any questions or comments. Alright, then we'll call for a motion.
I move that we adopt that proposal for R3 student safety as presented and move it forward for second reading and approval.
Second. Alright, then we'll open it up to the board for questions and comments.
You have?
Yeah, I have, so the renumbering, this would be R3. Can you explain that to me one more time? So R1 and R2, and then this took the place of?
Well, there was our, there was, there were four results policies.
Okay, oh, so we didn't want to have a five.
And so what we basically are doing is adding a third one.
Okay.
And then renumbering what were three and four, four and five.
So my, one other question is, is I thought when we were going to do this and bring this part back, is we have R4 renumbered and then R4, which is now renumbered, R5, which is citizenship. I thought we were gonna make that change into citizenship as well? Are we gonna do that at another time?
I was gonna, I was gonna propose that we change this.
Oh, okay. At the same time?
Because really the work was to identify all the stuff for safety that we're already doing, which is, which pervades policy, 1,000 through 5,000 series. There are policies about safety, and each of them addresses a piece of safety, emotional, social-emotional learning, physical safety, even the operational expectations kind of divides it up. If we declare this as a core value, what I tried to do was lift the pieces where safety was embedded, kind of baked in and call it out. 3.3 in the new policy says be respectful and compassionate. I lifted that from the existing R4. It should come out of citizenship, so it's striking renumber 4.3, and then renumber four and five to three and four.
I'm sorry, which one should it come out of?
It should come out of the last one, the citizenship policy, be respectful and compassionate stat in citizenship.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
But if we're thinking about holistic safety, then respect and compassion is part of the school culture.
It's just moved down to safety.
Yeah, we just moved down to safety. Then the reporting doesn't have to change, it's that piece of it goes up in the different policy.
That makes sense, but what I guess I'm getting at is the wording, we've been talking about since we did these results policies and we took them out to our first set of community forums.
Mm-hmm.
Or advocate for change. We were gonna add the word responsibly advocate for change or something to that effect. I can't remember the exact word.
My proposal is to change, understand how to advocate for change, to understand how to respectfully and appropriately advocate for change, or responsibly and appropriately. I have to go back and look at the notes, but we could do that.
Because I didn't know if we needed to do it at the same time or if we needed to bring that back, but it, because I know that we've talked about it, we've made, we've inserted the changes several times and we just have never done it. So I don't know if it's appropriate to do it within this revision since we're renumbering it, or if it needs to come back separately.
I think it could probably be done through this. But which, where is it you're talking about?
In R, which would be the new number, R5, under citizenship, 4.4, which I guess those would probably have to be.
Okay, that would just be, so we could come back with the second reading and add that language to 4.4.
Yeah, and then also the numbers on the side there need to be renumbered to 4.1.
5.1.
Yeah, and the same with on the, the new 4.0.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
And is that 3.1, 4.1, 3.2, 4.2.
So that would be the only things that I would recommend.
Yeah, appropriately and responsibly was the wording we discussed for.
I'm sorry, what was it?
R5 citizenship numbered 5.3, understand how to appropriately and responsibly advocate for change.
Yeah.
So I think we could insert that now and prove it forward, as well as whatever renumberings. But you'll want to strike, because it's in the safety policy, you also want to strike. So demonstrate self and social awareness from our, the social-emotional development one, new number is R4.
Oh, so just take out the?
Just take it out because we're lifting it into there.
Take out 3.5. Just strike 3.5. Perfect.
Yes, we're striking 3.5 and we're.
And then adding the language into 4.5.4.
Well.
The new 5.4.
Three.
Yes.
If we say, I'll come in again. If we say that social-emotional development is results policy four, and citizenship is results policy five.
Right.
Then we're striking 4.5.
Correct.
Because it now.
It's already up, well.
Yes.
And then we're adjusting 5.4 to add the appropriately.
And responsible.
And responsible.
Yes.
And we're also striking 5.3 because it's in the safety policy.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So one is getting, one line is getting struck from each four and five.
Yes.
And we're changing the wording.
Yeah, change the wording, strike the lines, renumber appropriately.
I think we got it. But anyways, I, I appreciate, Rob, that you're bringing forward this about making, you know, obviously, we have some words about safety, but we brought it forward as its own results. And I think it was important for us to do.
It came from when students were marching for our lives. That was April and May 2018, right? I heard the superintendent say, "Safety is a core value here," and went looking for it. And it is, and safety is everywhere. I can't think of a single employee who doesn't care about kids deeply enough to consider their safety before their own. Even, I was at a forum with a couple of teachers who said that they would put their bodies in front of illegal invasions to the schools. And it really shocked me that we need to be able to say this at the highest level so that there can be some public facing evidence of it, that we show people whenever a claim gets made. So the results policy will be there. And we're gonna go measure results policies later on in the year. Mike's gonna have to come back and interpret this and show indicators for progress towards. And we'll have those documents and be able to explain it in really structured terms now. It's something that I hope will help us put minds at ease.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, so then we'll take a vote to accept R3 student safety as presented and move it forward for a second reading next time with those changes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll make those changes and bring it forward, right?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so next is monitoring district operations, operational expectation OE4 personnel administration. Mike?
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask Janay to come up and chat a little bit about this. We spent some time in workshop a few weeks ago. And just for the audience's purposes, so the board created operational expectations and results policies. And we, we spent the first year kind of putting those together. And then the second year, starting to monitor those and present monitoring reports. And then in the middle of last year, we had a little change in administration. And so over the summer at the board retreat, we kind of wanted to talk again about the district's higher level OEs and results policies and just, and then when you look at the monitoring, trying to create monitoring reports that actually answer the questions that we're trying to, that are being created, or what are trying to be, you know, if the board wants to monitor this, we want to make sure that we're giving the right information. So we spent time over the summer revisiting a lot of those. The process we're going through right now is kind of recalibrating some of those. So instead of in some instances what might be considered busy work, trying to give reports to the board that actually achieve, not just the board, but even to the community, when they see them, they make sense. So OE4 is around personnel administration. Janay Holmes is our chief human resource officer, the churro. And so we spent time at our workshop last week talking about this. And so this is a first reading, so I'm gonna let Janay share some of this.
Thank you.
Thankfully.
So we discussed this at the workshop. And then prior to that, we talked about it in the summer. And so I've tried to make those changes that have been recommended in order to have the compliance. So hopefully those have been captured from the notes. One of the things that we were changing was trying to put a lot of that data into more of the annual report to provide you once a year that will capture a lot of the areas. In addition to that, we have outlined the policies that would also be in compliance piece of it under the specific areas that we talked about, or adding back in. I think there was one from the workshop that you added in that we did in 412, I believe it was. We have a new hiring system called Talent Ed. We will be able to run some reports from that and be able to provide the data to you also when we do the annual update. And we have an area in there for compensation and making sure that we stay in compliance as far as through our comparison districts. And so our, I guess the compliance for that would be when we do bargaining and then through ratification process and showing that we are staying comparable. So I've tried to capture that through the report by two and then outlining it based on which of the OEs it would be referencing, and then made those changes from workshop that we talked about. Just kind of just a summary.
Okay. At this time, we'll ask for questions or comments from the audience on this OE. And then we'll call for a motion from the board.
Right.
And then we'll ask for questions.
We're waiting for questions from the audience. It's not my turn.
Is there any in the audience that have a question? Okay, and we'll, here's the motion.
Will this be a place to ask Mike some questions, or should we make a motion and then discuss?
Make the motion.
Alright. And the motion is that the board accept the revisions for the interpretation and indicators for OE4 personnel administration. That's right, isn't it? And as presented for first reading and move it forward for second reading and approval. So that's the motion.
Second. Okay. It's been moved in second. And now we'll open it up to the board to ask questions.
Okay. Question, we talked a little bit before the meeting, there's another document that wasn't put into board docs that kind of shows a board that would play to the report. Do you have a copy of that with you today?
The annual.
Yeah, there's that.
You did, yeah. I am sorry, I didn't provide it to you to put in there.
Would you like to see it?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
It's a, it's a structural thing with me, but the interpretation and indicators document, which we'll use for Mike's review. Oh yeah, this, this reflects most of what I was thinking about, actually.
So part, part of this is that the, the board calendar has been kind of looking at, part of this is kind of recalibrating when we bring back the evidence to have the board actually say that we're in compliance. And I think that, I know that Julie and myself and Victoria have a meeting scheduled in the next few weeks.
To go over the calendar.
To go over the calendar to determine, because there was a board calendar of when we would, you know, the interpretation had occurred, but then when do we show whether we're compliant or we're not compliant? And so we've, I think, had some thoughts internally about what the timing should look like for that. And so we're gonna get that all squared away, hopefully, I don't know, I guess it's after the 23rd.
Yeah, I think it's on two Fridays or something. I think though, that the intention of doing these was to make sure in these OEs that the information was what the board wanted provided. And then we'll get those reports at a later date.
Correct.
When we do the calendar. So I don't think it would be expected to get a report now, which is changing the verbiage at this point.
Not asking that we have a report right now, but the interpretation and indicators document that we approved, those evidences of compliance should be the points of data that we're looking at. And in a couple of places, we have mixed in with the points of data, the. And in a couple of places, we have mixed in with the points of data, the process that's going to be used to produce the data. For example, I think in one of them, it says, gosh, where is it? Affirmative Action Annual Report, which is the point of data.
Can you tell me what number you're on?
About 4.3 here.
4.3.
Is that its data will be collected through, and that's a process that we're confident in. We'll continue our focus on diverse workforces and information, also a piece of the process. And all we really need to see there is that the Affirmative Action Annual Report will contain the indicators of compliance. Maybe we have to boil the plate of that report or some sample. If it's there, if this is still a thing that's being developed in response to a law, that's an understandable thing, we do accept that, I think. That would make those evidences terser and clearer. It's not a place where we need to see process, right?
So are you saying that we can narrow this down to just basically say the Affirmative Action Annual Report, personal thing that we need, rather than?
Yeah, I remember Dr. Stich, he tried to put a piece of evidence next to each bullet item, evidence of compliance.
But I guess, because I don't see a problem with having, say, that it's, the data will be collected through the process, and then, but we're going to be given the annual report, and that's what will be the evidence, but, I don't know.
Okay.
And part of this is trying to narrow down the evidence, because you're right, Dr. Stich did have evidence on every bullet point, and in many instances, the evidence didn't necessarily answer the question that the board was looking for. And so we're trying to get, we're trying to create, and I don't mean to say it this way, but honestly, we're trying to create a little bit of less work to give you the answers to the things that you're looking for. We're not trying to not give you answers to what you're looking for. And so like, the document has all of that material in, in an area honoring what the board wants in terms of, these are the statements, and then we're interpreting it to mean these things, and here are the evidence. I understand what you're saying, Julie, and what Rob's saying. If it's really just the report that we need to share, we might not need all this other language in there, we could write it that way. And I also understand Rob saying, well, I kind of like to see the report to have an idea whether or not I agree that this kind of fits with, with what we're thinking.
With what the report will look like, when we get the actual data?
I mean, I think...
I'm interested in that, but for this document, I think it's sufficient to say, our process will produce the Affirmative Action Annual Report, which contains evidence of compliance as described, or, you know, that's wording.
And ultimately, when that report is presented, you would say whether we were in compliance or not in compliance.
Right, so I'm basically asking you to simplify.
Yeah.
This wording is what I'm thinking of. And I know, for example, elsewhere, market comparison data on salaries, you do that, so the evidence would be a link to that comparison data, if it's readable, or just an attestation in your summary document, that we use comparison data from name and source, and the results are in the contracts, which are, here's the link. We know the link of the contracts are on the public website right now, so that would be sufficient, too.
Okay.
And then, you know, you've got the handbooks and things, so just link to the handbooks and say that that's what the evidence is.
But do we want to link to like, because I think that one of the reasons for this was to eliminate the amount of, because we can all go to our, each school on the website and look at the handbooks. I mean, all the information's provided for us there.
Individually, yes. I haven't found it on every school website, but yes, we could, and then a statement that it's there is enough.
But, I mean, I guess if we found an instance where it wasn't there, but I, I don't know. I mean, I guess I haven't really looked for an elementary handbook recently, but I know all the middle, high schools, okay.
Yeah.
But anyways, I guess that's what I'm getting to, is that we were trying to, because when we got so many links, it was too much for us to try to go through the, all of the evidence. And that's one of the reasons for this exercise, was to go through and get the information that we needed, rather than just an evidence dump.
Right. I think of this document as a public-facing one as well, and I think that might be a difference, is that someone who reads it should be able to go and see, drill into the, drilling down, to call in the database world, just click on it, and you get the other, the detail. If what you're saying, if what Mike is saying is that that's a lot of work, and let's not do that much work because it's, it's there and accessible, then that's something I can respectfully accept.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was kind of the exercise, was to try to identify what are the things that we need, as opposed to what, I mean, the best example for me was that, for what I was responsible for, was that we had to create a letter saying that we invest our money with the county treasurer when it's illegal to do anything other than that. You know, why do we have to present a letter from the county showing that we're following the law? Wouldn't that just be, I mean, you'd read about me in the paper if I was investing it with fidelity or something like that. So that's, that's the, that's trying to kind of come to consensus on those kinds of things. I guess part of it is, I thought we kind of had an idea of what those things were, now from the wording thing versus we want to go back and rethink that, we probably need to have more conversation. If it's a wording thing, it's like go to second reading, if it's rethink, we probably need to go back to workshop.
I think what I'm hearing is that it's a rewording thing, and we could go to second reading, which is by talking to you before the meetings. Wait, there's, you know, you pointed to it, says that's the evidence, and that was my concern for that item. In general, if you're listing the policies and maybe describing the modifications that went on over the last year, not work we're doing today, along with whatever pieces of data that a summary document would show, for the rest of HR, we already sign the documents for like, out of certification teachers or emergency certificates, and then just saying, you know, oh, look there, it's in the meeting, it's in the October whatever meeting, that's what I'm looking for.
So when I go through this, none of the interpretations or the indicators of compliance changed, it was just some of the evidence that is simplified.
Yeah.
So if it's wording changes, then we could simplify the wording changes and then bring it back for a first reading, or do you think we need to take it back to workshop so we can make sure that the evidence that we have is what we want?
I think it's just wording changes at this point.
Okay.
Because when I was going over it, thinking, well, what's the evidence actually inside that? I made myself a little list, and Mike showed me where the evidence was for the one I couldn't find, and it was right there, I just didn't find it, so.
I just want, I just want to make sure that you're okay with what's...
I think I'm okay with moving it for second reading after this discussion.
So we can touch base?
Yeah, let's just talk.
I'm good.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm good, okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
Just really appreciate this work. Thank you, Janay.
So it sounds like there will be some changes to the wording, and we'll bring it back for a first reading next time, so I guess we'll...
A second.
We're gonna bring it back for a second reading? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so...
And then you guys want to bring back for a third reading after?
No, we'll just...
We'll talk outside.
Yeah. All right, so we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next is board comments, comments by this whole board.
I'm hiding.
Let's see, talk about the...
I think I've, no? Trying to think, the last two weeks, it's been kind of crazy.
I started, today was my very first mentoring program, or mentoring lunch back after the summer, so that was exciting. I will be doing the PAL mentoring at Legacy again this year.
Oh, nice.
So we had about 12 students join us today, so, and it was a really good, really good meeting, so I'm really excited and looking forward to the rest of the year.
That's fun.
Cool. Well, we did a lot. We, Julie and I went to the Legislative Assembly, the WASTA Legislative Assembly in Spokane, where a lot happened, but I think what I learned from the discussions both before and during the assembly was that our priorities are going to be well represented by WASTA this coming year. Social, and not social, special education funding is definitely in the top 15, and I'll be able to, during workshop, pull up the document and share that with everyone else about how the association prioritized things. A lot of safe schools, little career pathways, a lot of spend funded, is the essence of that. I accepted an invitation to visit the construction site with Dan at ES22 and got to see it up close, and got a few pictures, and I'm really impressed with the process they're using and the care that they're taking to fold that school into the neighborhood. Of interest to me was the fact that they're, some of the heating is floor heating, radiant floor heating, is water circulation, and they're focusing those heating elements into the kindergarten and first grade areas where the kids are often just sitting on the floor all the time. And that kind of attention to detail is really cool. I also accepted an invitation to visit, I have to get this right, UA Local 290 invited me to come see their training center in Tuaut. I am really impressed by the education offering that they have at the training center. They, it is on par with a community college in certain ways, and with a university in other ways, but if you're admitted to a program like that, you get paid, they find a job for you, and then they have, bring you along over five years to be a journeyman pipe fitter or plumber, or, there's a third thing, I forgot what it is. And I'm hoping that we can begin some conversations with those entities, now that there's pathways, developing some understanding with them about what constitutes good admissions into an institution like that. One of the most impressive things I heard during my talk with them was that they want to bring one of those facilities into Clark County. So knowing the shortages and knowing workforce projections, we should participate with them as much as we can and get students lined up.
That's great.
And everybody who's interested. Coming up on the 11th this week, I'll be going to the Legislative Committee meeting, where we'll be preparing the association position for WASTA based on what was learned at the Legislative Assembly. So that work isn't done, and that's what I have.
Yeah, it was a couple of good days in Spokane Legislative Assembly, and I think Rob and I, we both prioritized ours, and then we agreed on what we would present, and most of ours were in the WASTA top 15, so, and we did pretty well. Another exciting thing that we forgot to mention is that Senator Murray is coming tomorrow morning to visit Hila, and I think several of us, along with Mike and a couple of cabinet members, will be there.
Yeah.
So that'll be a good opportunity for us.
Yeah, at 9:15 tomorrow morning at Hila, and there'll be students kind of touring a few of the programs, and Kate Nwai, the associate principal, will be there. Yeah, that'll be great.
It's always a good opportunity.
She's coming to see him.
Bring people in.
I'm gonna bring up the fact that we receive funding to help construct the building, the quality school construction bonds, where the federal government pays, all the interest, we repay the principal, but as a kind of a senior senator, I feel like she should be able to maybe do some loan forgiveness for us. We might as well try.
Yeah, right, doesn't hurt to try.
It does not hurt to try.
Okay. I think she was instrumental in getting that fund.
Yeah, I'm sure she was, so that'll be a good thing for her to hear, and maybe she'll be instrumental in forgiving it as well.
It'd be nice.
What's another 17 million to them? I'll try.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
It will be fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, next, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Next, future agenda items, anything from the board? Okay. All right, next up is citizen comments. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the board, if they'll come up to the podium and give us your name and address, you'll have 30 minutes, just make sure it's not personal or legal in nature. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up? All right, so at this time, the board will go into a recess where we'll sign documents, we'll reconvene in a board workshop in this room. We will do operational expectation OE3, community. We'll do results to academic achievement, we'll get legislative update, a superintendent's update, and then we'll have a board meeting debrief. Then we will then go into an executive session, where we'll review the performance of the public employee. Thank you.